With beautiful surroundings, comfortable gathering spaces, and picturesque views, the campus of Atria Woodbrier offers the standard of senior living, long preferred by the most discerning older adults on Cape Cod. Atria Woodbrier Place, a new state-of-the-art building, offers independent and assisted living options with luxurious amenities, an environmentally friendly design and construction. Atria Woodbrier, 389 Gifford Street, Falmouth, 508-495-5500.
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure.
of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. We are returning to open session from a prior executive session. I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
My name is Brent Putnam. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Pat Flynn, Town Manager Julian Susso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, and Selectmen Kevin Murphy and Rebecca Moffett. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise, we ask that you silence it for the duration of your time here with us. Please refrain from any private conversations here in the room, or immediately outside in the hallway, because it can interrupt the proceedings. If you wish to speak this evening, and there will be opportunities for public comment, we ask that you wait to be recognized by the chair. When you are recognized, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean the audience or our recording secretary do. And please direct all of your comments and questions through the chair. If you choose to leave early, please do so quietly, because obviously you're leaving early and we still have business to conduct. We do have a speakers' policy, as a copy of which is on the door and at the lectern, and we ask that all speakers adhere to that. Anyone who wishes to record the meeting, you may do so via audio, simply need to announce that to the board. If you'd wish to record the meeting using video, you will need to get permission from the board. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to record the meeting, audio or video? Okay. During then, we'll go on to the first item on our agenda, which are announcements. Ms. Flynn, you had one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I wanted to remind all of you here and those at home that there is going to be an opiate forum at Falmouth High School this Wednesday evening at 7:00 p.m. I don't think I need to stress at all the serious nature of opiate addiction on the Cape, the use of opiates, and the huge problem that it's causing both among young people and older people as well. I might mention that three of the police departments, Mashpee, Bonstable, and Yarmouth, have created a pilot special street crime unit of police officers who are working outside of their regular jobs. They're working every day of the week, every shift of the week, and they are crossing jurisdictional lines, which they are able to do because they are also sworn as sheriffs, which allows them to do that. It is a pilot program. They need additional funds, and we're hoping that the state will be able to provide some of those funds. It's a way to really, I think, to get far more serious about this whole issue. So I would encourage all of you who really take this issue seriously to come to the forum Wednesday, March 27th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Falmouth High School.
Any other announcements from the board, Town Manager's office? Okay. We do have some committee vacancies that I'd like to announce. There are two positions available for the Affirmative Action Committee, one position for the Board of Assessors, two for the Building Code Board of Appeals, two positions for the Cable Advisory Committee, one full and two alternate positions available for the Conservation Commission, one alternate position for the Cape Light Compact, six positions on the Cultural Council, two alternate positions on the Design Review Committee, two positions on the Commission on Disabilities, one position on the Finance Committee. There is one full and one alternate position for the Historic Districts Commission, three positions for the Human Services Committee, one position for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the Steamship Authority Port Council, that position is vacant. There are four positions available for the Substance Abuse Commission, three positions for the Town Building Committee, three positions for the Transportation Management Committee, and one for the Waterways Committee. Anyone interested, please come to Town Hall, the Town Manager and Selectmen's office, fill out an application, and we'll have you in here for an interview. If there are no other announcements, we'll move on to the public comment section of our agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to provide comment on any items that are not on the agenda. It's 10 minutes maximum. Each individual has a maximum of two minutes, and again, we ask that you adhere to the speakers' policy. Mr. Finnern, you'd like to speak?
Mark Finnern, Precinct 6, candidate for Board of Selectmen. Last week, you voted on a policy, and it's the policy of this board, when you are voting or considering policy, that you take no input from the public. Firstly, I disagree with this, because it is the public's business that you're doing, so they should be allowed in on any discussion of the methods and manners that you approach this. But more specifically, last week, before you set the, or voted on the betterment for the sewer, you had to clean up an old policy that you had from the first sewer-ing. You went on at length and discussed how it was not fair to businesses, the price was too high, when the reality is, over 95% of the tee-ticket sewer-ing is residential homes. What you omitted from this discussion, it's obfuscation, I think it's something that the public should have known, was that in voting down that policy, you also voted down the 45% betterment that was policy and was charged in the original sewer-ing, and raised it to 70%. I think that's a piece of information that the public should have been provided with, and I think that people in the sewer-ing project should question why others paid 45% betterment and they pay 70. And as I said again, you have further policy discussion tonight, and I think that in the future, the public should be involved, as it is their business. Thank you.
Thank you. For anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right then, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you. We have minutes, March 10, 2014, public session.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the March 10, 2014, public session?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, unanimous. The March 10, 2014, executive session. There were two parts to this.
I would move approval of the executive session from March 10, 2014, concerning the litigation Valley Me case, and not release those?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I believe, I think we can move approval of the item two, purchase conservation restriction to Weland, and release these minutes.
Mr. Susso, is that correct? Is there any restriction on us releasing the discussion regarding the conservation restriction?
None that I'm aware of immediately, but I believe they're both listed on the same...
They are on separate sheets, so we could potentially release these to the public if there's no legal reasons for us to do so, to withhold them.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the board's indulgence, when I check with Town Council, and report back to you a week hence?
Okay.
I would amend my motion just to approve them and not release at this time.
Second.
So the motion is second to approve those minutes and not release them at this time. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And we have the summary of actions, which is pretty thick this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before we get going on the summary of actions, I'd like to make a disclosure that I'm a holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hold 1A, 1F, and number 12.
Does anyone have any need to hold any others, and we can just work through the rest of them?
1B, and 5.
Number 5?
Uh huh.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll read through the list of the ones that have not been held, and I'll be looking for a motion to approve these. Cinco de Mayo Celebration Academy Lane, Monday, May 5th, 2014. Run Jack Run Family Fun Run/Walk, Falmouth High School Field to Trotting Park Fields, Friday, July 4, 2014. Woods Hole Mayfest, Taft Playground, Saturday, May 24, 2014. Wedding Parking Surf Drive Beach Parking Lot, October 4, 2014, Bullis Bushy. Wedding Ceremony Old Silver Beach, October 4, 2014, Buss. Wedding Ceremony Old Silver Beach, September 20, 2014, LeBlanc Kennedy. One-Day Liquor License Cinco de Mayo Celebration Compassionate Care ALS, May 5, 2014. One-Day Liquor License West Falmouth Library Murder Mystery Evening, March 29, 2014. One-Day Liquor License West Falmouth Library Fundraising Event, April 12, 2014. Authorize Town Manager to Award Amendment 1 in the amount of $22,500 to Science Wares in a time extension to July 31, 2014, to the original contract dated February 25, 2013. Accept donation to the Falmouth Veterans Council Donation Account from VFW Post in the amount of $500. Payment from the Beach Department Donation Account is all medical corporation, $3,132.20. Accept donation of one bike rack from the Friends of Falmouth Bikeways and Corner Cycle. Old Stone Dock Request for Letter of Support to Delay Implementation of Biggar Waters Act that will change the maps of the floodplain. Approve EDIC Application for the Owner's Agent Technical Assistant Grant. And finally authorize the Town Manager to sign DEP Activity Use Limitation Release.
Move the items as you've mentioned?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for all items except 1A, 1B, 1F, number 5, and number 12. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And Ms. Flynn, any?
A is the Falmouth Classic Car Club, and this is being proposed from Marina Park on the dates of May 18, 2014, June 22, 2014, 8/24, 2014, and 7/6, 2014. And I held this because 7/6 is the Sunday of the fireworks weekend, and there are lots and lots of people in town on that day. And Marina Park is also used by some of our emergency services employees, so I would like to make the motion that we approve all the dates except July 6, 2014, and send it back to the chamber and ask them if they could come up with a different date that doesn't conflict with the fireworks weekend.
Okay. I know we have a representative. Would you like to say a few words? Can you shed some light on this perhaps?
Derek Sutton, representing Falmouth Classic Car Club. We originally requested July 20th, and the town requested that we alter the date, and we accepted the offer to July 6th, so this comes as a little bit of a surprise to us. There is a little bit of a conflict for us making even another date, which is possibly July 13th, but a Saturday person apparently is going to be breaking down their display or whatever on Sunday, so that makes that date not available. You do know that, you know, we did four dates, and we tried to, you know, spread them out. If it's any consolation, generally we're gone by 3:00 p.m. Actually, most people are probably gone by 2:00 p.m., if that helps at all. Just trying to explain.
The date of the 6th was actually recommended by the Town Manager's office?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, the reason for that was that the item B, the cultural survival, was being moved from Pig Noonan Park to the Marina on that weekend, and that made that weekend not available to try and...
The 19th.
The 19th and 20th to relocate. And that, the 20th, was originally what they preferred, so we asked that we consider an alternate date, and the 6th was the one suggested.
I'm actually comfortable with the 6th. I know that they do tend to break up early, and if the fireworks happen to be... Are they...
Friday.
Are fireworks on Friday, so assuming, hoping for good weather? That it shouldn't have an impact, I would think.
A question, and number one is if fireworks, because of weather, if you cancel, they would probably move to the following night, so that would even make the schedule a little bit tighter, from the 4th to the 5th, and then this would be on the 6th. We have often talked about the Gus Canty Center as a potential for events. Would the 13th work for you at the Gus Canty Center? Do you know where I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
As a location, so I'm just throwing that out. These are cars. One of the things I did notice in the application, there is some concern about cars being on the grass, and whether that's appropriate at the bandshell. I'm wondering whether the 13th would work, again, taking it away from the date that Mrs. Flynn's discussing, and we don't have anything going on in this community on the 13th. We have something on the 12th, which is the reunion. The 13th could be in the Gus Canty parking lot or the adjacent grassy area. Again, we probably don't want cars on that area as well. Would that date work for you then?
Well, before we get into negotiating different dates, I'd like to get a little bit more from Mr. Sutton about what it is that they do, because remember, we've got a positive recommendation here from the staff for the 6th, and I would imagine that they've done a considerable amount of due diligence to provide that date for us. So when you do setup and takedown for this event, what's involved with that?
Very little to the grounds. Basically, you know, we get the electricity from the bandshell, and we set up a PA system for background music and announcements, and, I mean, other than parking the cars, there's, you know, cars aren't moving, doesn't present a danger to the public or anything, and you've probably all seen that, you know, during the dream cruise on the library lawn, we've never damaged any grass or property, and I'm actually proud to say that we usually leave the grounds cleaner than when we find it, and we kind of take pride for that. Anyway, as far as, it's very little breakdown, you know, setup and breakdown, it's quick.
My suggestion, really, the reason I brought this up, is because there are far more people here, almost as many, not quite, on July 4th weekend as there are, especially when the July 4th is on a Friday and part of a weekend, as opposed to if it's just in the middle of the week. It certainly isn't as great as the number of people who are here in the road race, which is upwards of 100,000 people, but I would say that there are probably at least 80,000 people, if not more, on 4th of July, and it's just the volume of people, and when it's on a Friday, they have either been here all week on vacation, or they're getting ready to take vacation for the following week, and there's a large amount of people here all at one time. And it's just that the town is very crowded on that particular day, and there are people coming, and there are people leaving, because it's on a Sunday. And it would just seem to me that you would get better participation if it were not on this particular day, and it would ease, I think, a lot of the burden of all the traffic on that particular Sunday of a fireworks weekend. So my suggestion was, we approve the other dates, and just ask you to take this under advisement for a week, and see if you couldn't, by working with your group, come up with maybe a different date, and come back and let us know the following week, or let the Town Manager's office know, and then we could take it up finally next week, because we are meeting the following week. Maybe you want to come back and say, "We've looked at it every possible way, and this is the only way we can do it," and that's fine, if you come back with that, but at least take a look at it and see if maybe there isn't another day that we could substitute for July 6th.
Okay, just for my own clarification to bring to my people, it would be two choices, hold our guns, so to speak. We'd like to keep it on Sat... I mean, Sunday, we do like that location, and a lot of people that attend like that location, and the alternate would be on the 13th, but at the Gus Canty parking space, I can certainly bring that to my people.
That's been suggested, yes.
Bring that back to Mr. Susso's office this week.
Ms. Moffett, you had something?
No, I think that Mrs. Flynn has said exactly what I'm thinking, is that it's becoming too crowded, and it's a point of, as I'm looking at yours, you're thinking probably 200 people, and I think 200 people, and I think how many extra cars, when we already have events going on. My issue is the parking for the people who are going to come to your activity, and that's my thought about it, is it's one of those weekends that there are more people than other weekends, and we need to go through that process of where do all of those cars park.
Well, as far as spectators go, I don't believe many spectators actually occupy spaces. A lot of the people that attend our events, actually, they attend the event, their cars are parked on, and then they go down to the flying bridge, or maybe into town. I've never seen people, just spectators, so to speak, park on the street or anything. Maybe a few on Queen Street or something, but it's never been a problem, not that I've been aware of.
I'm going to stick up for you a little bit. This was not the date you picked originally.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay? So maybe we go back to the date you picked originally and see if we can find another location. We're all coming down on 4th of July, I mean, that's where the... You didn't pick this date. Now, all of a sudden, you're in the trick box, because they moved you to this date, but maybe you could go to the other dates and find, we could find a location that would make you comfortable.
Certainly bring it to the president, you know, between me, the president, and the vice president, we'll make a decision.
Agreed.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I would like to remind the board, and I'm going to say that I'm going to vote against this motion, and not because I have a problem with Mr. Sutton's request, or his group's request, but because, quite frankly, I think we're missing the point of establishing the events policy, and the Town Manager's office asking them to do the legwork for us. Mr. Sutton and his group brought before, they did what was needed to do. They proposed dates. The Town Manager's office vetted everything. They provided an alternate date. They've given us the recommendation, and quite frankly, we're second-guessing it based on a few minutes' discussion about what traffic might be around on a Sunday in the middle of July. I understand the traffic's going to be there. It's going to be in the entire town during July and August in the summertime, and the reality is, is that this event has been held for, I don't know, as long as I can remember, years and years.
Years and years.
I've heard no complaints whatsoever about this event over the years, and here we are, second-guessing staff after we asked them to do this. So I'm going to vote against this motion, not because I have a problem with the event, but because I have a problem with the motion. Any last discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four to one. I am the dissenting vote.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Moffett, you held item B.
Well, now I have to get over there to see what that is.
Cultural survival.
And this is the one that is over at Marina Park. Is there anyone here from the Cultural Survival?
No, this is the Cultural Survival Festival, which in years past has been held at Pig Noonan Park.
And no one is present? Well, I was just, if there isn't anyone, my question is, where are they going to park their cars when they're over at Marina Park? And they're looking at 1,000 to 2,000 people. So one of the issues is that they're going to use the Mullen Hall lot, but that isn't for the people, that's for the trucks that are coming in with all of the supplies. So I understand if they're just, if they're going to be going back and forth. I'm not going to agree with this. We can have the motion on it, but I do not agree with this number of people and coming into the Marina until I can speak to someone who's going to tell me where all these 1,000 and 2,000 people are going to park.
Can I make a suggestion? I'd make a motion to approve this pending a required meeting three weeks before with the Town Manager's office, the Police Department, the Public Safety, and the Department of Public Works, which we do on very, a lot of events, we do require those meetings. So we just make this approval contingent on that, that the issues of parking, or the issues that were brought up about cleanliness and things, be addressed at a meeting with the organizer of the event. the organizer of the event.
I'll second that motion. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
We have a motion in a second. I, you know, I'm going to raise the same issues I did before. The town manager's office has vetted this. They've provided recommendations to us, and it sounds like we're second guessing this. If, if we don't want the town manager's office to do the legwork for us, then we shouldn't be asking them to go through all these hoops to present this information to us. It's that simple, folks.
Well, I think my issue, my issue is, concerns the parking, is not one of the discussions that they are having as they're vetting each one of those. The, the question about parking is not on the list of their, what they're discussing. They're checking dates, and there's a, a whole list. We all know that. My issue is that when you bring a thousand to two thousand people into the town for one activity, where are those cars going to park for one to two thousand people?
Mr. Jones? And I would support what you've been saying, Mr. Chair, that the fact that no one's here is because they've been meeting with our working group. And their understanding is the recommendation's a positive one, and that we are going to be moving forward with that. To then ask them to come to this meeting after they're ready to come to that other meeting, I agree that the, we've asked our working group to look into these things and to consider these issues, and I would do everything I can to support what the recommendation is. Ms. Harper, so.
Just to follow on, just so you're clear on what the recommendation of the staff working group was. The original application, as you recall, came into Pegnoonan Park, and the recommendation of the staff working group was not recommended. And we declined that application and asked this applicant to propose an alternate location. The alternate location that they proposed, having been at Pegnoonan Park for several years, was Marina Park, and the staff was inclined to allow this, or at least this year, to determine whether that was a viable alternative to the Pegnoonan location I've previously been in.
I, I think, though, the intent of the motion is not to deny the application, is to simply say, because of the volume of people that they put, that they indicated on their application are going to attend, that the motion is suggesting that having a meeting with the police department and, and D P W because of picking up trash and all of that would be important to have. And it's just suggesting that that meeting take place about three weeks before the event so that the town is prepared to handle the issues. And I think that's a good, I think that's a good suggestion, particularly when you're having that many people involved in a, in a single event.
It is a recommendation. I've seen some of the other recommend, some of the other upcoming events have that kind of a meeting. And I wonder if that's a typical thing that we're now starting to set up, I think, for the Zuma one, and for, there's another thing I think we're looking at tonight also, that's asking for that setup meeting three weeks in advance, I think, for the fireworks.
And I don't really believe that that's part of the policy, that the town, what do we call them, the events group is, is been asked to address. That's not their issue, that's our issue. They simply recommend the, the venue. But when it comes to dealing with, you know, other issues like the parking or the, or the numbers of people or all of that, that really comes back to us to determine how that should best be handled, because we have the capacity to be able to say, we need you to meet with the police department and all that, whereas they don't. So I think it's perfectly appropriate to add that to the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll respectfully disagree with you. I, I agree that we, we have formulated a policy to ask a committee to analyze these and come up with a recommendation. That was the reason we came up with the policy, is because we got differo, different pieces of paper at different times, and a lot of times, those pieces of paper did not accompany the application. The buck stops here as elected officials. If something goes wrong with one of these events, no one's going to call the people on the review list. They're going to call Kevin Murphy, they're going to call you, they're going to call you, and you. Bottom line is, we have a fiduciary responsibility, a responsibility to the people who pay taxes, people who vote in this community, to bring up what we think, as elected officials, things that could possibly go wrong. Because guess what? You know, a pound of prevention is, is a lot better than, than having something, you know, cut off at the end. Bottom line is, if we try to plan them properly and we bring up, as elected officials, some things that we know constituencies out there may object to or may want planned a little bit better, so be it. Otherwise, why, why even put them on the agenda? I mean, if we're just going to rubber stamp them, that was the whole reason we came up with the policy, to put them on the agenda, is in case a member of the board had a question and wanted to do a little bit more work on it. I, I'll support Ms. Moffett's suggestion here, but I think there was an easy compromise, and the compromise is the fact, we're going to, three weeks before, we'll say, okay, let's review it. Because guess what? No one wants the phone calls, nor do the organizers want the phone calls. So I, I, I'm not saying we're not going to give it to them. I'm just saying, let's, let's make sure that we plan it properly.
And Mr. Murphy, I'm not saying that we're not going to give it to them either. But I, again, this is the checklist that they've provided us, and in fact, the police department has looked at this, the fire department has looked at this, the parks department, the highway department. Again, we're attaching additional restrictions, conditions, wherever you want to call them. I understand that, I understand where your folks are coming from, but it seems to me that it's redundant, because the work's already been done. They've already been consulted, the various departments, they already know the event is forthcoming. And we're basically, I, I.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
Through you. Did the folks from the cultural survival come to the meeting?
They were available on conference call.
Unacceptable. Enough said.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Who was in favor of having a meeting before?
Excuse me, I reversed that.
Okay, okay.
So I'm in favor.
Okay. And the motion carries four to one. All right, Ms. Flynn, you held item.
Well, I only held this because the events committee does not recommend it. They, the Castleberry Americana Arts and Crafts Festival, they are new. This is the first time, I think, they have come to the town. And they are also requesting the Fourth of July weekend for Marina Park, and it is impossible, I think, to use Marina Park, because the fire department uses it on Saturday for sure. And then if, if the fireworks are on Sat-, or Friday and Saturday, then, so, since the, I just wanted to point out that since the events committee also recommended that they find a different date, that we, that I certainly would make a motion to support that recommendation, that they find a different date and not grant the dates that they requested.
I was reading this as a not recommend, following their recommendation, I'm not recommending this.
So the motion is to accept the recommendation of the events committee.
All right, so it does, no, or we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the events committee, which is essentially to deny the application at this time. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Terry Mullen, did you want to say a few things? You have, it looks like you've requested alternate dates and you can come back in and work with the town staff to address that?
We'd like to request August thirty and thirty-one, which is Labor Day weekend, but not the Monday, just the Saturday and Sunday. We need the Friday for setup date, and this would be our first event in Falmouth, but we're not new. We've been doing this twenty-five years.
Okay.
At this point, though, we'll ask you to come back in, confirm with staff, make sure that all the issues have been addressed, and then it'll come back to us for approval.
I was just brought down here just to be denied, but it's just a, just a new date, but everything on the application is okay except for the date?
Well, the date, town staff is going to have to look at it and determine if there are any conflicts, if the, the other town departments have any issues with that particular date.
I got an email from Diane saying that the rec. department said the park is available for those days.
Well, the rec. department is one of many departments that have to look into this, police, fire, parks.
So I never knew there was a working group, and I put my application in in September.
It's a new process this year that was the, the result of the board's special events policy that was enacted late last year in order to try to get a handle on all of the events that are going on in Falmouth. And as you can see, even with the policy in place, there's still a little bit of contention from time to time. There's a lot that goes on in the summertime, and we're trying to get our heads around it.
Okay. So where do I go from here? Do I call and see when my dates can be looked at?
Yes, reach out to staff tomorrow, find out if they want to sit down with you at all, and they'll.
I would say, too, that most events, probably like cultural survival as well, people just come for like half an hour, forty-five minutes. They just come and shop the booths. They're not there for the whole entire event. You don't have a thousand people on site at one time. And our events are self-contained. We always rent local dumpsters and toilets. We hire a jazz band. We have a lot of craft demonstrations, and it's a jury arts and craft event. So I hope to come back.
Thank you.
All right?
Thank you.
It, it just, and I'm, I don't need you on this. I just make a comment that, you know, the presenter summed it up, that people come and shop. We have a lot of folks in this community that pay rent in their stores year-round. And we have this in the cultural survival, and whatever that come into this community for one day, bringing artisans into this community who probably typically don't live in this community, make their goods in this community, and they make money in this community and, and leave this community. So that, I'm just going to leave that as a comment for the board.
You should know, too, they all stay locally. They put up in local hotels. They eat locally. We dine, we go to the theater. So we're a nice little shot in the unkey local economy, too. We're not just coming and taking. We promote the event. We're in every best read guide. We're members of the chamber. We become a wanted tenant. We never want to bring an event to where we're not wanted.
Thank you.
It's all American, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion in a second, then, to accept the committee recommendation and to deny the event on this particular day. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Ms. Moffett, you held item five.
On the reunions of summer past, is there anyone here? Yes.
My name is Don Cross.
Yes, okay. And I see this as a fundraiser for the mass fallen heroes?
Yes.
So at one point, it is not, it is, it is for profit, but the, you have that marked as for profit.
Well, the reason I chose that is because we, I am not specifically a nonprofit. They are a nonprofit, and all our, any proceeds are made directly to them. So we're not taking any money in our names at all. Any checks or anything received will go to Mass Fallen Heroes into a separate account. We make not a dime off this. They actually pay the checks out to the people who are offering the services.
That, that was one question.
So I just couldn't answer that question technically.
Yes, I see that you, you did that. And you're expecting about fifteen hundred people between the hours of four and ten?
That's correct.
And is there entertainment? That was the other part that I.
There is, yes. Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, excuse me. This is the liquor license we're approving only, that we've already approved this event.
We have approved the event.
And this is just the liquor, the one-day liquor license that we're up for tonight.
Okay. Okay.
Couple of comments. Last year, we approved the license till nine, the event goes till ten. You know, the, we approved the liquor license till nine.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
The event goes till.
Fair enough, yeah.
Fenway Park, they don't serve until nine.
Understandable, yeah.
So I think it's fair to say.
Sure.
Go till nine o'clock.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem.
That's, that's no problem.
In the normal requirements, liquor liability insurance and things like that.
Yes, and we do have two and a half million dollar policy there through John, Mark Ferreira.
Okay, so in other words.
And we can supply that in.
If it's through them, that your, the service will be tip straight, right?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yep.
So I make a motion to approve with the license from four to nine P M.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Flynn, you held item twelve.
I held item twelve because the, the appointment of the Chamber of Commerce representative to the golf advisory committee happens also to be an employee of the Woodsole Golf Club. And that was sort of learned this afternoon, and town council asks that we defer that until he can look at whether or not there may be a conflict of interest there. So we just take no action, is what I'm suggesting.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Takes care of everything on the summary of actions. We now have a sign hearing. This is a request for twelve off-premise signs. Daffodil days.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was a, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous.
That's for April nineteenth, is that right?
Yes, it is, that's correct. Two dates.
April twenty-sixth. That's the date. Oh, April, sorry, April nineteen and twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, right.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a request for special event, the Fourth of July fireworks, Falmouth Heights Beach. Mr. Drillak.
Good evening. Dutch Strollit from the Falmouth Fireworks Committee. I'm here to ask permission for our thirty-fourth annual fireworks show on July Fourth, at the rain date of July fifth. Ball field in the heights, and the beach out front, and any other place we can use to host the people, as usual.
Tell us a little, but I've heard there's insurance now?
We're getting, buy some rain insurance. There's no such thing as fog insurance. But let's face it, if we get the rain, we know that there's a possibility we could have fog. So we're looking into that, yes.
Very good.
Then we don't have to ask Julian to hold out for a payment.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah. Just to, to point out once again, as I'm sure to point out to you, to increase the number of port of parties, facilities at the Falmouth Heights area.
We did that last year. You probably still had complaints. I could probably put a thousand out there, you still have complaints. I'll increase it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve, and with the conditions set forth by the committee.
One other thing, excuse me, that Ms. Harper will arrange a meeting approximately two weeks before the show with all the department heads. She'll be in charge of that?
You're, you're taking away my thunder, it's all part of my, my motion.
Go ahead, go.
I'm on a roll. It wasn't over with the Germans bombing Pearl Harbor.
I know, I know, I know.
Okay. Now you broke my stride. That you'll sustain the traffic plan implemented in two thousand and thirteen, increase the number of porta potty facilities at Falmouth Heights Beach area, attend a pre-event meeting on June the twenty-sixth at ten A M. in Town Hall with all public safety and departments, contact inspectional services forty-eight hours prior to the event for tent permits and inspections, if applicable, and contact the fire department to arrange for an inspection of food equipment, food cooking equipment, if applicable. So that's my motion.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Great event.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dutch.
Thank you, Trill, all your work, Dutch.
Next item on the agenda is a request from the West Falmouth Playground renovation project, and Together We Can to engrave a rock at the Swift Park in West Falmouth. We have a representative from the.
Susan Moran, I'm the president of the West Falmouth Village Association, and I'm here for Sandy Cooney, also, who is the treasurer of Falmouth Together We Can. This is a proud moment for the project. It was a collaboration led by my son Jake Barry and heavily involving the West Falmouth Village Association, the Falmouth Recreation Department, and Falmouth Together We Can. And before the board tonight is the, a request to commemorate the service of everyone involved and to etch a rock for the playground, similar to the one that was there when it was originally built by the, the firefighters and by Mrs. Swift's family and the collab, the, you know, the collaboration, which was about nineteen fifty-nine or so. the, you know, the collaboration, which was about nineteen fifty-nine or so. So, this is echoing, you know, the history of the park, and we request that there be a favorable vote. The actual, the rock will read, "It's Swift Playground renovation, thanks to Jake Barry, West Falmouth Village Association, and Falmouth Together We Can 2013."
So, the original rock is still there, the original plaque?
It is. And in fact, we're, we have a volunteer who's gonna spruce that up and make it a little more readable and kind of parallel the new one.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Next item on the agenda, bike path connector license agreement, Town of Falmouth and Steamship Authority. Mr. Sussow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to advise the board that we still have some deliberations occurring between the Steamship Authorities, League of Counsel, and the town. And as a result, I'm asking if the board would defer action on this for a week to two weeks, either your last meeting in March or your early meeting in April, so we can bring that to full closure and bring you the final package.
Any questions at this time? All right. We don't need to take any action this evening. We'll set it on a future agenda. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have Great Bay Street. Another section is being closed between Reynolds Street and Mayflower Street. Mr. Sussow, Mr. McConerty, who gets this one?
Town engineer Peter McConerty is gonna carry the ball.
I will take it. Good evening, Peter McConerty, Town Engineer. Before you tonight for a request for another closure of Great Bay Street, I've been before the board twice in the past for several sections of roadway to be closed. This section of roadway is from Reynolds Street to Mayflower Street, approximately two hundred feet. Previously, Aricoi Street, the three previous roadways were closed. Aricoi Street, Toledo Street, Reynolds Street was blocked off. At the end of Reynolds Street, there's a, there's a severe erosion going off from the coastal bank down to the bottom of the, the bottom of the shore, where I think, I believe a lot of the stormwater coming down Reynolds Street is, is contributing to the, to the problem. And what has happened is that Public Works has placed some large boulders at the end of, the end of the roadway, and they're getting closer and closer to the edge of the bank with the, with the, excuse me, with the erosion. So, what we propose to do is block off the remainder of Reynolds Street and block off Mayflower Street. So, vehicles will be able to go down Mayflower Street and travel south, but they will not be able to travel north. There is one house on the corner of Mayflower Street and Great Bay Street with two driveways, one driveway on Mayflower Street, one driveway on Great Bay Street. The driveway on Great Bay Street won't be able to be, will not be able to be accessed. It'll be, they'll be used the driveway on Mayflower Street.
Questions from the board?
Do those two driveways connect?
They do not, no.
So, you're gonna take...
Excuse, I can address that.
Let me just ask...
One at a time, folks.
You're gonna take away this property owner's rights to get to his driveway?
It's been, the property owner was, was fully, yeah, he's in fully consent of closing the driveway. So, and actually, the second driveway was built to remove this first driveway.
Ms. Moffett?
Are people still using that road for walking or walking their dogs or recreation?
Yes.
Is there any thought about the limit of that? I mean, is that contributing any other problems? Because there are, oh, there were so many people that would walk that road.
Yeah, I believe the walking and the, and the, you know, the recreation, used the walking and the dogs, and that's not affecting the roadway. It's the storms and the damage from the, from the ocean and the shoreline coming towards the bank. That's, that's done the damage in the past. I believe this winter, we haven't, we didn't have a severe winter as far as storms, so it's, I mean, we had snowstorms, but we didn't have the coastal storms to wear further of the bank. But, we're still in consideration with the applied coastal. There's a coastal engineering contractor that's looking at the design of those banks. So, once that design goes through, we'll go through the Conservation Commission, and then at some point, we'll be at town meeting to request some funds to see if that can be...
It just seems very thin right through some of that area. I just thought maybe there was discussion of limit on that.
Right. But what happens on the, it's, what happens on that roadway is a lot of the edge of the roadway, the coastal bank is covered with, is covered with vegetation and growth. So, you don't see behind that vegetation and growth, there's a lot of erosion that curls underneath the bank and going, starting to go underneath the roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
Well, just when you're talking about the engineering work that's in the design work, is there any way to, for them to determine what, what's under the road? I mean, how stable it is?
Yeah.
Back to the point where the, the erosion could, could go under the road? I mean, is it possible to determine that?
Yeah, basically, what's, what's on the bank and what's been eroding on this, on the side of the bank to this date is basically what's under the road. It's hard-packed, it's gravel. It's been driven on for decades. So, it's hard-packed on gravel. But, that's basically what's coming out of the slope is what's underneath the roadway.
Is what underneath.
Right.
Questions or comments from the audience? Let this gentleman first, and then Mr. Fineran.
Bart Dolan, seventy-eight, Mayflower. I'm just here to support Mr. McConerty in his efforts. My driveway is affected by that, but I've been working with Concom. It's actually an asphalt driveway. So, they're actually happy. I'm taking out the asphalt and moving around, putting a gravel on the other side away from the hundred-foot coastal bank. But we really appreciate what you're doing to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran?
Mike Fineran, precinct six. I was just wondering, is this engineering plan gonna do something about the road water runoff, which is causing the erosion, and it's also attributing to the degradation of Great Pond? Blocking the roads off really does nothing to prevent the problem, and we're gonna have to deal with it one way or another. And proper road water runoff remediation would take care of a large percentage. I know in Little Pond, it's over twenty percent of the nitrogen inflow is coming from road water runoff, and I have to assume that it'd be a similar number there. So, I wondered if it's gonna be dealt with properly. Thank you.
Mr. McConerty, could you address that?
Yes, plans, the, where we are on Great Bay Street is a lot of those side streets are private streets. They're private roads that are leading down to Great Bay Street. So, we're limiting on the amount of work that we can do on those roadways. But several of those roads do need some drainage and some, some attention for the stormwater. So, we will be looking at those roadways, Reynolds Street being, being one of them. You, I mean, if you stand down on the beach, anyone that goes down onto the beach area can see the side of the bank and see the drainage pipes sticking out of the side of the bank. So, it's gonna need some work. Right now, the end of Reynolds Streets is catching up very close to the, the first portion up near Oak Street as far as damage to the roadway. We're going to need to address that portion of the roadway, because it's, it's further eroding, further than areas up, up north, north of Reynolds Street.
Any further questions from the public? All right. We need a motion to approve the road closure.
I move approval of the road closure, the section of Great Bay Street between Reynolds and Mayflower Street.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding bluestone replacement on Main Street. I believe, again, Mr. McConerty?
You want the lights down?
Please.
Thank you.
That's all right.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I could make a couple introductory comments?
Please.
If that would be permitted in anticipation of Peter's presentation. The board may recall, we've had difficulties with the, originally installed bluestone. It is in several areas beyond its useful life. And we had a, an experimental test replacement area near Henness Jewelers on Main Street last fall, where we had colorized stamped concrete put in place of the deteriorated bluestone, which in several areas has become, as the board's aware, a, a public safety hazard for pedestrians and others utilizing the sidewalks downtown and, as well as in front of Town Hall. And we had a very good response to that experimental test area that Peter McConerty oversaw and Public Works, working with a contractor, installed. And we are hopeful, as we represented at that time, that we could replicate that approach in other areas of town to achieve a similar result in a much more cost-effective way with the concurrence of the board. So, Peter wants to speak about that, and I know the board's familiar with the safety hazards that are essentially in the southern portion of Main Street in front of Town Hall with the bluestone that has gone to multiple pieces in many locations, given the challenging winter we were in the midst of. So, I'll defer to Peter further for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Julian. As Julian had mentioned, the Main Street, the bluestone, the edging on the sidewalk, edging, as everyone knows, is on the north side, it's on the south side, from Post Office Square of the town green down to Shore Street. The south side is deteriorating more than the, the north side. And the south side during the winter gets all, it does not get the sun. The, the, the snow and the ice stays on the sidewalk longer. The, we have machinery that gets on the sidewalk that deteriorates the, that deteriorates, that slides along the sidewalk and it hits the tops of the bluestone, it shales it off and deteriorates it. This is a plan that was put together for Main Street. It's, it's easy to see when you have a copy in front of you on the wall, on the plan, the yellows don't show up as well. But basically, it's the south side of Main Street from Post Office Road to Shore Street, including the area in front of Town Hall. The total sidewalk length is approximately a thousand feet. There is a portion of bluestone that was repaired and from, between Elmarch and between Kahoom Court last year. That will remain, the, and the bluestone around it will be replaced. I'm, I'm just gonna go through a, some photos showing that the bluestone, the deterioration of the bluestone. You can see it's broken up and shaled with it, with the machines get on it and just the, the ice gets underneath the bluestone. Basically, these photos were taken and from walking south, walking east from John's Shoe Store towards Shore Street. So, as you can see, a lot of the areas of the, of the bluestone is all between the machines getting on them and flaring the snow and, and the ice and the water penetration under the stone is, is deteriorating, is deteriorating the walkway. My understanding is, this project was done in approximately nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine with the bluestone, under the presumption that the bluestone would get ten to twelve years out of the bluestone, and it's something would need, would need to be replaced with another material or replaced with the bluestone. So, this is 2014. We're already at twelve to fifteen years into the cycle. So, I believe the, the bluestone worked. It's at the end of its lifespan right now, but it did work for the duration during those years. This is a, a set of plans that was sent to the Falmouth Historics District Commission. It's on the agenda for next Monday night. Basically, it's the same plan as I showed you at the beginning of the road, with, with the, the roadways. It's hard to see in the yellow, but it, the yellow shows the areas that are being replaced, the sections that are being replaced. And there's little arrows showing where all those photos were taken, were taken along the area. And this is basically the, the photos I just showed you. These are basically photos on the set of plans that I submitted in. And each numbers, once again, each number has a section number to where it was taken on the roadway. This is a set of, of photos of recently stamped concrete projects that were done on Main Street. The following photos were, are better, are better. They're larger, they're easier to see. But these are two projects that were done on Main Street in 2013. This area was done in front of the Main Street Fire Station. It's the September eleven, two thousand and one monument. Shows the bluestone. And once again, the, the concrete, it's, it's engraved, but the concrete, it's, it's mixed into the, the color of the concrete, it's mixed in at, at the truck. So, it's not a surface treatment. It's, it's throughout the, it's throughout the concrete mixture. That's another area. It shows, it shows the pattern of the concrete. And this section is in front, is in front of three fifty-two Main Street, just in front of Henness Jewelers. And this is an area that was previously, last year, it was planted, I believe. Miskowski Landscaping did some plantings in that area throughout the year. And working with Paul Miskowski, we had some, three sections of this area that we sectioned out for him to replant during the years. He'll replant it this year. And then the remainder of the areas, we replaced the, the broken sidewalk that was in there, or actually, that was a, a dirt area. So, when, when vehicles are pulling up along the curb and they were stepping out, they were stepping out into a broken sidewalk and a, a dirt area that was, that was unstable. And that's a closer section of the, the stamped concrete. To this point, we've received many, many comments and feedback of the stamped concrete, and they've all been positive. We haven't really heard anything negative for the area. It works well in the area. As known, it's, it's not a stone. It's a, it's a concrete, but it will bring it to closely match, as close as we can to the bluestone that's there. And I think, I believe that's the end of the, that's the end.
Mr. Jones?
And see, the significant difference between this stamping concrete and the stuff in front of the fire station, where I think the fire station stuff is really supposed to be decorative. I would think it'd be very hard for a stroller or a wheelchair or a walker to manage that kind of rough surface well. This is much smoother than that.
It's, it's a smoother surface, right. And, and actually, in this area, this, this section of sidewalk was done in late November before, it was just before the, we were trying to get ready for the Christmas parade the first week of December. And what had happened is the cold weather sat, sat in right after we did this, a week after we did this. So, we didn't have the chance to do the seal coating on it. They, they seal it with like a sand top mixture, the seal on it. So, it'll have that same top effect as it would in front of the nine eleven monument. So...
Mr. Hart?
Where is the funding coming from?
The funding coming from this, we, we finished the, the town's, the funding that was in 2008, the article that was passed for sidewalk funds, between the sidewalk funds and the articles that we have for the sidewalks.
And I'm gonna make a couple of comments. I, I wholeheartedly agree that this bluestone was probably a mistake when we did it because of its durability. And it's surely deteriorating. But I'm gonna speak up for the Village of Woods Hole, which has sidewalks that are, in some cases, downright dangerous, and even more so since the gas companies, when they remains, that it's a patchwork down there. I kind of be a little upset if, I know that we had put money aside for that. If Main Street jumps ahead because all of a sudden they had a bad winter, it's not the only commercial district in this community.
Yep.
So, what's the plan? Are they gonna be a priority versus another commercial district in this?
Nope. The, the plan is, is both projects go off at the same time. Woods Hole and Main Street will go off at the same time. Main Street, they'll, they'll pull the sidewalk and they'll do the bluestone in the spring. We tried to get it done before Memorial Day. And Woods Hole, the contractor, the gas company, is halfway through putting the laterals into the buildings. So, in Woods Hole, the, our contractor, who is Lawrence Lynch Corporation through the county, will get on there and they'll set the curbs that they need to set, at the ADA ramps, the transition curbs. They'll set those for the sidewalk. They'll put patch behind the sidewalk where they need to do, and they'll get ready for the milling of the roadways. And they'll mill the roadways and they'll pave the roadways for the spring. And then, because it's a tight area down there with all the pedestrians and the tourism and the vehicles down there, they'll pull out for the summer. And then in the fall, when they go back, they'll, they'll finish up and do the rest of the sidewalks. We have approximately, I'd say, if you added all the sidewalks, lineal feet together, we have probably thirteen to fifteen hundred lineal feet of sidewalk in Woods Hole that we'll be replacing. So...
Right. So, but I don't want to confuse the sho- Right, so, but I don't want to confuse the situation, but not only is the sidewalk need to be replaced, and I know it's on your plan, but it's been exacerbated by the gas company, which now has patches along the sidewalk and it's in numerous locations.
Right.
Wait until the fall there is, oh, oh, that sounds great, but
Yep.
it's going to look terrible for the entire summer season.
Yep. What we can do is I'll speak with the contractor. I was down there actually today, and I saw the work with the patches of the sidewalk. They broke the concrete sidewalk out and they just put an asphalt sidewalk as a filler. We might be, we can take care of those sections that they disrupted, and then in the fall, go back and take care of the other sections that we planned on.
Okay.
So at least the restaurants down there and the tourism down there, the pedestrians will be able to walk on.
Okay, thank you.
Somewhat of a flat surface, and then in the fall, we'll continue with the rest of the remainder of the sidewalk. We originally had, for last year, it was, the money was appropriated for it. We didn't get to it because we're, the, this gas work was coming, and we wanted to do the roadway first.
Well, I appreciate that. But I do like this bluestone replacement option.
I think it'll be easier for Public Works too because of the, you'll be able to put the machines on it. They get Bobcat on it. You'll be able to scrape across that, whereas the other ones, it shales the tops of the stone off. And I know the highway department at this time gets a lot of calls there in the summertime from people coming out of the restaurants and tripping and falling. So all down Main Street, mostly on the south side.
Any other questions from the board? There's no action, then we need to take this as informational only. The DPW is undertaking this as part of their day-to-day operations. So thank you for the update.
Thank you.
If we could get the lights, and before we continue, I am going to, we'll have a five-minute recess so we can stretch our legs. The board's been sitting here for almost two hours now, so we'll reconvene at eight twenty-five.